It's just about ten o'clock. Welcome everyone to this meeting of the OIV and scrutiny performance board on the twenty fourth of September two thousand and twenty five. The first item is apologies and welcome. So could you tell us if you've had any apologies, Sam?
Yes, Chairman. We've had apologies from councillors Mel Alcott, Sam Busto, Natalie McFay, Richard Tudge, Dave Edmonds and Church Representative Tim Reed.
Thank you. It's just as well. We increased the number of OSPB members to fourteen, otherwise we wouldn't be courting. So item two is declarations of interest on any party whip. So I'm looking to members Karen.
Yes, good morning Chairman. Agenda item five Worcestershire Local Enterprise Partnership. I am the sub for the Northern representative of the district councils. Thank you.
Thank you. But you'll be clearly this morning wearing your scrutiny hat.
Absolutely Chairman.
Yeah, it fits you well. Public participation. I suspect there is none.
No Chairman.
Which is disappointing. Confirmation of minutes of the previous meeting held on the twenty fourth of July. There is a correction here that rather strangely councillor Emma Stokes was included in the minutes when it should have been councillor Seb James. I don't understand how they could possibly confuse the two.
I wasn't even wearing a wig that day Chairman.
Well apologies said for that. So we get into the first substantive item this morning, the Worcestershire local. Oh no, we've got to confirm those minutes, haven't we?
Yes.
So I'll move them as an accurate record. Does that find a second of anywhere? I'm sure. Lots of places. Thank you. Any dissenting voices? Right. So we're going to item five. It's a great pleasure this morning to say hello to Gary, Gary Woodman, who is chief exec of the Worcestershire LEP, Paul Walker for Malvern, the Chair of the LEP, Luke, we know so well, Luke, you're the deputy, Paul Robinson, chief exec. God, since we've got top table this morning. And comes on Joe Monk, we've got leader here this morning as well. And we've got Alan Amos in the in the front row. I don't know whether that means anything. And Rob Wharton, Finance and Efficiency. So Alan and Rob, you're most welcome as cabinet members as well. Now, in addition to all of that, if that were not enough, we have district council leaders here this morning and or district council reps on behalf of their leadership. So we have councillor Lynne Denham from Worcester City. Councillor Douglas is not in the room. I don't see him yet. Okay. He's from Malvern if he comes. Councillor Ian Hardman from Wire Forest there. Good morning Ian. Thank you for coming all this way from Kidderminster. I've heard moments this morning about how long it takes to get from Kidderminster to Pershore.
Did you miss out Paul Robinson?
No, I didn't. I mentioned Paul Robinson. I'm sure I did. How could I not? So without further ado, we have a report before us today on page one. This is something we do annually. We actually were required to do so, but it's always a pleasure and particularly at this point because I think there's a sort of fork in the road potentially. And I think we can explore that this morning. So I think it's more than ever would be useful to have a good chat about this this morning. So without further ado, Paul, would you like to introduce your report?
I will do so.
Thank you.
That opportunity over to Luke who will give us to introduce a summary of
In a minute it'll be Alan.
The LEP opportunity thus far.
Luke, the floor is yours.
Thank you Chair. Good morning everybody. Pleasure to be here again to give an update on the LEP achievements. Conscious that there are a number of maybe new elected members that perhaps aren't familiar with the LEP. So there was a bit more kind of detail and background around that which hopefully gives a bit of useful context to the history around this. So what are LEPs? Local enterprise partnerships. Ah, thank you. Is that better? Can everyone hear me okay? Apologies. Local enterprise partnerships, partnerships between local authorities, the education sector in terms of further education, higher education and local businesses. And sometimes you'll hear that model referred to as the triple helix model, which is referenced here. And they're about really determining local economic priorities, bringing those sectors together to talk about that and to lead economic growth and job creation within the local area. The work of the LEP is really marshalled by the economic strategy that was published back in two thousand and twenty one in partnership with all of those those sectors. The Worcestershire Plan for Growth, which spans two thousand and twenty to two thousand and forty. And that led on from the Strategic Economic Plan, which preceded that and had some strategic targets, macroeconomic targets that the LEP has been tracking since two thousand and twenty fourteen in terms of job creation, GVA, which is a measure of productivity of the local economy, and house builds as well. I'm pleased to say that all of those initial targets which were measured to a two thousand and twenty five timeline have now been successfully achieved. So in terms of the job creation target, that was originally twenty five thousand, twenty eight thousand jobs have been created based on the latest figures. A two point nine billion target in terms of GBA has been surpassed. It's three point eight billion has been achieved. And the target of twenty one and a half thousand new homes has just been achieved as well with twenty two thousand four hundred delivered again, but based on the latest figures. And the Plan for Growth extrapolates that kind of trajectory. And there were new targets now set out for two thousand and thirty and two thousand and forty. So just a little bit now in terms of since the last report, what have we achieved? So there's a there's a list in here which is quite lengthy. I'll pull out just a few highlights if I may. We continue to get good engagement with the business community. So in March this year, we held our big conversation annual conference event, which attracted over two hundred local stakeholders, some of them new to the to the network and the growth hub network, and use that to capture intelligence to help inform our kind of future delivery. We continue to deliver the annual local economy report, which I'm holding a hard copy here. And if anybody would like to see a copy of that, please let me know. We can we can make those available. They're on our website. There's a couple of capital programme updates to flag this year. They've been a bit quiet in recent years because obviously originally the LEP used to deal with capital funds. They take a while to come to fruition. Two positive updates. It was a pleasure earlier this summer to be at the formal opening of the Green Technology Centre at Kidderminster College, a new state of the art facility to deliver automotive and construction training in partnership with Kidderminster College. That was delivered in part through funding from the Getting Building Fund. And the other kind of capital programme update is originally, I mentioned the SEPA earlier, the Strategic Economic Plan. As a result of that document, we secured just over seventy one million pounds worth of capital funds from government to deliver a range of projects. Whilst the money was defrayed some time ago, the reporting requirements have continued up until March two thousand and twenty five for the LEP. And we've now received confirmation that that's successfully delivered the outcomes and the outputs that were originally reported. And government consider that now a successful delivery and close now in terms of our reporting requirement. So a good track record there. Moving on to innovation, the LEP has successfully secured some seed funding from the British Business Bank this in this last year, which is to help with the feasibility study of setting up a business angel investment network. A lot of businesses talk to us about the challenges they have with access to finance. And we're hopeful that this can be another mechanism for, you know, certain scale up businesses that will enable local investors that have high net worth, personal worth, the ability to work with businesses, have a look at pitches and potentially make investment into those to help them grow. We the progress on that project is going really well. And we are looking to launch that later this year with the first pitching event due to take place in November. That really builds on what we're trying to do in the innovation space within Worcestershire and trying to really build that ecosystem. And earlier this year, we trialled a new tech fest initiative, which was about kind of showcasing some of the assets and good practice and great businesses that we have in this space in Worcestershire. And there were a series of events that were run over two weeks in January and February, looking at artificial intelligence, cybersecurity, digital adoption, intellectual property. And as a result of that, we've we've now established a new Women in Tech Forum, which goes from strength to strength. And we're looking to repeat that in two thousand and twenty six, due to the positive feedback that we've had from businesses in that area, and are seeing more engagement from businesses in that area that want to get involved in the two thousand and twenty six iteration. And lastly on innovation, Beta Den. This is a technology accelerator programme that the LEP have launched and run since since two thousand and eighteen. That has supported over one hundred and thirty six businesses now in terms of taking some of their innovative products and services from ideas and getting them to help commercialise those products and get them out into the market. So really supporting innovation and entrepreneurs locally. And as a result of that, we've seen great recognition nationally and regionally in terms of award wins there. So some good work from the team. If I can move now to the skills area, some positives to report here as well. The Worcestershire Careers Hub is now ranked in the top four in England and has expanded the number of schools that it is now working with in terms of teaching pupils about careers opportunities and how they can be successful in going into careers locally. That's been a real step change, you know, at the start of the programme, Worcestershire was ranked at the bottom of the league table. And it's in a complete turnaround now. So to be in the top four is great. And as part of that careers hub work, we've done a bit of an innovative partnership with the University of Worcestershire, who many of you will know, do deal with teacher training, and have tried to kind of seed that into newly qualified teachers and kind of giving them insight into careers learning so that when they go into their first jobs in the teaching profession, they're taking that learning with them and you're kind of creating careers leaders of the future from the outset, if you like. In March, we again delivered organised chaos of the annual skills show over a couple of days. So we saw over three thousand pupils from year seven to ten engage with over seventy local employers to understand what jobs and careers are available here in Worcestershire. Again, an important part of trying to prevent the kind of brain drain that we have seen in recent years from Worcestershire. And this year, we celebrated the tenth year of Worcestershire apprenticeships as well. So really championing the role that apprenticeships play in local economies with the support of education providers and local employers. Skills Boost with funding from district council partners through through UK Share Prosperity Funding has helped to upskill and reskill a lot of the local labour market. We've had three hundred and eight employers that used the grant last financial year, and have seen over twelve hundred employees now upskilled as a result of that programme, and over fifteen hundred training courses completed as a result. In terms of business support, the Growth Hub continues to engage with businesses. Last year engaged almost fifteen hundred businesses in the year, and as a result referred into almost over four thousand referrals to local different business support schemes. Some of those would have been grants locally. Some of them would have been into regional and national support programmes, things like Help to Grow, Innovate UK Funding, et cetera. And have successfully delivered on the targets that we had through the funding agreements that we had with district councils in terms of the support that we received from districts and around UK Share Prosperity Funding. Through that contract, we've supported over two thousand seven hundred businesses. And a result of the support led to the creation of over one hundred and forty seven jobs during that period. So I'll stop there in terms of the achievements and just quickly finish on kind of touching on what are we working on now in terms of the a bit of the look ahead. So I've touched on innovation. The development of an innovation strategy is part of the work that we're doing at the moment. We see that as integral to kind of telling that story about innovation in Worcestershire and helping to underpin any funding opportunities that are likely to arise as a result of the government's industrial strategy and kind of funding options that emerge from there. Beta Den will continue to deliver its programme. That is not just an accelerator now, but is also an incubator. So seeing higher volumes of businesses and entrepreneurs being supported through that programme. And I mentioned earlier the Angels Network. So we're hoping to launch that, as I say, in November of this year, and hopefully see that go from strength to strength. Skills Boost continues this year as well. We've continued to see good uptake from businesses in terms of taking that on. We've seen more training providers come to the table in terms of being interested in it. So we access to their networks in terms of raising awareness of this. And also using the Growth Hub to tackle some of that youth and engagement as well. So youth hubs in Redditch, Worcester, Kidderminster, where the Growth Hubs are kind of working with businesses to help get them to consider, you know, young people in terms of vacancies that they may be having on their in their organisations. And as always, we'll continue to deliver the kind of the business engagement pieces. We've got the conference that will be delivered next year. I've mentioned Tech Fest. Apprenticeships Awards will be again celebrated in November of this year. And we will be delivering the two thousand and twenty six version of the Economy Report. Some of the national data sets are being refreshed as we speak and will be released over the over the next couple of months. So we will launch that in the early part of two thousand and twenty six. I think I'll probably stop there and hand to Paul.
Thank you very much Luke for, I hope, what you found to be a short and concise but impressive summary of the achievements of the LEP over the last twelve months as a retrospective which befits this. Is it still not on? It's on, but sorry if you can't hear me. Is that better? Yes. Yes, as a review of progress of the LEP over the last year, I think that's a very impressive summary of achievements. But I just a couple of things to say. As you're all aware, the LEP has been in existence for more than ten years. And that degree of progress and achievement in the last year has been built upon the progress that the LEP has made in creating a coherent partnership between the private and public sectors and the great deal of work that's gone into giving a common hymn sheet. That strategic plan that was developed was a very important part of making sure that as far as we're able, everybody is pointing towards achieving the same objective and understands the same barriers that lie ahead of us. So it is, it has been a very impressive year for the LEP, but built upon the work that's gone into establishing the momentum that the LEP has built over the last ten years. I think as perhaps the chairman alluded to, in reality, this is going to be a critical point for the future of the LEP, for the single reason that as we stand here, the existing funding sources of funding that supported the LEP will effectively expire at the end of this fiscal year in April next year. And at this point, there is no clarity as to where and certainly no certainty as to where any future funding to support the activities of the LEP will come from. And therefore, I want to put the strategic context in here for the LEP that as far as I can see, we will be in the position of needing to begin unwinding the LEP in the summer of next year, using the reserves, assuming they're still available to us as they are at the moment, to make an orderly winding up of the LEP in the summer of next year. That's as we sit here. That's the only certainty I have in terms of the likelihood of some of those activities that Luke alluded to, that we are still clearly seeking to continue to contribute to the growth of the Worcestershire economy. But that uncertainty is at the very least something of a black cloud that sits upon our understanding of the degree of commitment and clarity we have towards achieving those objectives that Luke outlined. Thank you, Mr Jim.
No, not really. I think the report covers where we are in terms of achievements and the activity. I'm sure you'll find the questions you'll amongst us will find the issues that we want to do. So I'm quite happy that we hand straight over.
I'm sure you're right. So I just want to make Lynne and Ian first of all, welcome. And you're not going to sit here and do nothing. You've come this way. So I will be asking, inviting you to ask questions as if you were a member of the board this morning. Ultimately, in any kind of summation that we go through, it will just be board members who take part at that point. But until that point, if you catch my eye, catch Sam's eye, Ian already has, then I will certainly invite you to speak. And Ian, since you caught my gaze straight away, running past Karen, you have the first question.
Thank you Chairman. Good morning everyone. I hope you'll allow me to make a statement rather than ask questions, which is positive in itself.
Well, it's always helpful to frame it in a question, even if it is a statement.
Okay.
To the extent of do you agree or something? Yes.
Yeah.
Marcus, it's your line, it's your trade, isn't it?
Right, thank you.
And so frame it in a question.
Okay, well, just to say that, you know, this is a, first of all, can I say thank you for allowing me to attend your OSPB as representative for Wire Forest District on the occasion of the LEP report, which is in my view a very comprehensive report. I've enjoyed reading it, thank you. And it really highlights the amount of work that's been going on. I put here a little note for myself. It tells it like it is, which is very good. I'm particularly pleased that in terms of Wire Forest, that is, Beta Den have moved into our old court redevelopment project in Kidderminster. This is the former magistrate's court that has been absolutely refurbished. Also good to see the ongoing collaboration with Kidderminster College. Thank you. Another point to make is the Buteley Community Energy Group has benefited healthily by receiving a hundred thousand pounds towards their River Severn project. Chairman, that's really my summary of the report that I've read. Thank you very much. And ironically, if I may add, that I put here, please keep up the good work. Thank you.
Let's frame that into a question. Will you keep up the good work?
If allowed to.
If allowed to. I think you've already described some of the challenges ahead, which I'm going to chase up with Paul or possibly the leader in a moment or two. Josh caught my eye. I'm assuming everyone wants to speak, so I'm going to call you all in turn unless you tell me otherwise. Josh.
Just a quick one. Question, just the bit at the end that was said about winding up next year. And I just wondered if the the LEP and maybe the cabinet member could comment on what would be the consequences to Worcestershire's economy if the LEP stops, ceases to be in effect as of next year.
Yeah, that's the big question in the room, isn't it? Who would like to go at that?
I'll start. I'll kick us off. So obviously Paul painted the picture as is of today. And I suppose councillor Hardiman also identified some of the work that we've done, particularly in Wire Forest. Some of that work has been through external grant money that we've gone out and found. So certainly helping the Buteley Energy Group is not our core, but equally we have helped and supported. but equally, we have helped and supported. I think our view at this point is, and I suppose here's the bit, you know, if you unravel this model, and it doesn't matter whether it's called a LEP or you will find in other geographies it's called a Business Board or however it's structured, that working together and that partnership piece will probably survive. But of course, it's, we have to acknowledge that it's about funding and resources and money that at the end of the day drives activity. So I think the relationships between local government, business and the education sector in Worcestershire will continue. But unless there's activity through funding, it becomes, you know, a sort of point of nice to have and nice to have the chat, but what are we really going to do and what are we going to drive? And that's been, I think, the benefit of the previous central government money. But also that local partner engagement's been really important, whether it's from whichever sector. And that's made the difference. And it's not the same everywhere. It's easy to say, you know, oh, well, of course, of course, there's those three areas of work together. We, I can point you to a number of examples where it hasn't worked and they've not been successful. So I think the model might be the thing that we think about as we go forward into the future.
Okay, let's explore this a bit further because this is opening up quite an interesting line of inquiry here. Paul, the chief exec of Worcestershire County Council, what have you heard so far? How would you respond?
Similarly, we had a similar debate actually at Leaders Board this week. And I think everybody sees the value of, let's not necessarily call it a LEP because obviously that's old language, but in our case, it's the LEP. And we were fortunate that we had a continuing, you know, the same boundary. And I think that's worked really well for us. So I think we're absolutely clear that none of us want to lose the things that we've gained. And the government's push is for growth. And I think we all want growth. And certainly, the economy nationally needs growth, as does our local economy. So in some ways, all of the strategic pushes are in the same direction. The one big issue, of course, is money. And as we stand here today, we have an allocation in our reserve from the County Council that will look to maintain a level of LEP activity moving forward.
Just to interrupt you, Mark, could you tell us how much that is?
I can't exactly. I think it's about £800,000 that we've got left. But I can give you the number. I can certainly give you the exact number from Phil. But that keeps the organisation ticking. The question, of course, is what does the organisation do? And the other side of that coin is where district partners have been really involved in terms of the SPF funding that has come through from national government. Now, the question is, what's going to replace that? Because that is coming to an end. And we will certainly have it on our budget discussions with the Cabinet in terms of what we're going to do around growth and business funding. But as all members will know, and we've kept no secret of this, money is very tight. We are in a difficult situation, so we won't be able to do the lifting entirely on our own. But if you look further around the sort of future of local government, whether it's one or two unitaries or whatever happens, then a link with business and a mature way forward in terms of getting growth into our economy has to be a strategic aim. I'm certain that will be in the new local authorities, irrespective of who runs them, whether there's one, two, five, 10, whichever. Everybody will still want to make sure for their citizens and for the area that we are driving growth. It might be sustainable growth, you know, there are different definitions depending on your politics. But nonetheless, everybody is wanting to see a bright future. So to let the LEP go, in my view, would not be a good thing to do. But ultimately, that will be a decision for members, and it will be framed by the level of funding that we have from central government, the level of funding we have from council tax, and ultimately, the demands that we have statutorily on our services. So this is not a simple conundrum to solve, and I'm sure that will be the same for our district partners as well. But I do think it's one that we need to really think long and hard about. Because once these things are lost, they're very difficult to get back. Probably more difficult than starting from scratch, actually, because you have a legacy. And I would absolutely want to give my thanks to everything that the LEP has done. I think we've got a good team of both public and private sector people working on it. They've had some great outcomes, as have all of us, and our residents and businesses have as well. And certainly, I will be putting that very strongly to members in terms of what can we do in terms of making this, at least get us over to the position of local government reorganisation and hopefully into a better place. The next two years are going to be difficult, but for the future of Worcestershire, irrespective of its governance, actually, growth, relationship with business, attracting new big business, growing our smaller businesses, these are all things I think we agree on, irrespective of politics or council.
I'm going to come back to Josh because he started this conversation in a moment. But just a question for me of clarity. In terms of ongoing funding, is this revenue or capital or both?
It's, this is revenue effectively. This is to keep the organisation ticking. It's so that we have the costs of administration, if you like, to organise, run and put things forward. The cost of the primary services has been paid for UK SPF in a lot of cases. We have some small elements still remaining, so tourism, for instance. We put some money into and various other things. But they are limited, let's be honest, they are limited. And it's not clear from government where that next tranche of money is coming from. That's the key unknown at the moment. So we can keep the organisation going, the question is to what end?
Yeah, very good point. I'm, Luke, just a quick one, because I want to, I want to listen to what the politicians have to say. Look.
Thanks, Joe. If I may, just, Paul's absolutely right, just to add a bit of addition on the budget point. The budget position for the LEP has become more complex over the recent years. In the early days, the LEP received a core grant from government, which was a revenue grant, which enabled full autonomy and localism in terms of what it was decided to be spent on. What we've seen in more recent years is that that refunding has dwindled to nothing in this financial year and has been replaced by, in some cases, competitive funding that we've had to bid for and the use of UK SPF, which we've obviously been very grateful for in terms of the investment from the districts, which has helped kind of bolster capacity. There still remains some core grant funding from the government, but that's linked to the Growth Hub. So it's very ring-fenced funding streams now, and that's where some of the complexity has come from.
I'm conscious I'm putting the members on the spot here without advance warning. And I'm not expecting full comprehensive responses, but I would appreciate a sort of a general response to what you've heard, because it sounds to me as though the future of this organisation will depend on revenue funding by the County Council, potentially. And that'll have to wash its face against all the other budget pressures that are going to be prevalent at that time. Paul, you're.
I'm shaking my head, it doesn't have to just come from us.
No, no.
Anybody can fund it.
Forgive me, but I'll rephrase that. The potential for County Council funding will need to be considered in the wider context of all the other budget pressures that will have emerged at the time of the budget. Do you accept that as a premise?
I accept that as a premise, but that's exactly the same for our district colleagues as well.
Yeah.
There's no statutory requirement for the county to do this, just as there isn't for the district.
So you can see where I'm trying to get to, some clarity about what might be coming down the road in terms of any political support for this. I suspect you won't be able to give that unilaterally this morning. So Alan, maybe first, because it covers both of your cabinet responsibilities. So Alan, as a politician, having heard what you've heard so far this morning about the potential deficit in funding, what would you say in response?
Did you call me a politician, Chairman? Well, I'll give my honest views, because this is not really party political, I don't think. This is much bigger, and it's about the future of Worcestershire, its workforce and so on. I do despair frankly sometimes with what governments do. Here clearly is an organisation that, in my opinion, is first class. Quite simply, when I first saw a draft of this report and was asked, is there anything I wanted to add? Funny enough, there wasn't anything I wanted to add. It's comprehensive, it's good news. And having met the staff involved, and I would point out, there aren't many staff involved. We're not a huge bureaucracy on this. Committed staff, small group, but experienced, committed and dedicated. And I want to pick up something Paul Robinson said, because if it ain't bust, don't fix it. So when we accept the reality that this LEP won't be here much longer, my simple view is that, well, we need another LEP then. Call it what you will, I'm not fussed about titles. But what this organisation does is pull everything together to get jobs, to get economic growth, to get economic activity, so people can have a fulfilled life, which they can't do without being in full employment, in my opinion. The contacts that have been built up, the partnerships that are working, we deal with small, medium and large companies, businesses. The advice, the support, the encouragement is all there. I issued three press releases this week already on things related to job creation and economic growth, business support. So the point is, and Paul Robinson did say this is not statutory, in my opinion, it should be. And frankly, I don't care whether it's statutory or not. We have to provide the resources for business support in this county if we want jobs. We're not separate from this county, we are this county. And I'm 100% committed to ensuring that the work that is going on now is not lost. Because Paul Robinson is absolutely right. If you break up a team like this, you can't put it back together again. You can't keep fiddling around with you, well, you've got a structure, you change the structure. You will lose the staff, and new staff will come in and they won't have the experience. So I'm going to fight incredibly hard for this. I would hope that the government would.
Alan, because lots of people want to ask you questions and ask other people questions. I think what you're saying is that you have enthusiastic support for what's going on and recognise the excellence that goes on. And from your position, you would wish to promote that as hard as you could in the budget round that's coming up. Yes or no?
Oh, a very definite yes.
Okay, that's great news. Just for the sake of clarity, to also ask councillor Waterton if he had anything to add to what councillor Amos has said, then I'll definitely come down the line.
Nothing to add really, other than to completely concur with what councillor Amos has said, that we're all committed to do as much as we can for business growth within the county.
Okay, great stuff. Josh, you started this hair running in the first place.
You're responsible.
I remember that. Thank you for those answers. And what I've heard is that, you know, maybe £800,000 might be something we've got in reserves, but a lot of it is, you know, UK Shared Prosperity, which my understanding is from the districts. And we have no funding this year from the government. So how much are the costs like benefit? If we put £800,000 worth of taxpayers' money from Worcestershire in, say it's from Worcestershire, it could be from anywhere, what does that give in terms of growth for Worcestershire? You mean, could we just do it another way? Is this the best value of money?
Gary is itching to answer that question.
I mean, as you go through the list, it's quite difficult to kind of say. But in terms of where we have done evaluation reports on some of the activity, so if you look at Beta Den, for every pound that goes in, six goes back into the local economy. Growth Hub is an advice service, so it's a bit of a different challenge to get, you know, how much do you put in to value back? But again, the evaluation of that, we've estimated that it's somewhere between £1 in, £10 out. So the skills work then is sort of measured in a different way, really, in terms of those outcomes. But nevertheless, you know, you can see that often skills has a slightly lower kind of pound in, pound out. But the impact on the individual who moves into either training or employment is significant. So those are a bit harder to kind of evaluate as we go along. But nevertheless, those are the sort of sums that you can start to see and start to come back through.
Okay, now, I think we've just finished that line of inquiry potentially, unless Karen wants to continue with that or something completely different.
No, actually, and thank you very much, Chair, and good morning, everybody. And thank you to the team from the Worcestershire Local Enterprise Partnership for coming along this morning. So I'd like to just talk about Beta Den in the first. That's been an absolute fundamental success. And in saying so, I think we need to pay tribute to Linda Smith, who was the founder and ex-CEO, who sadly passed away in July this year. She really did a phenomenal job of establishing Beta Den, and we've had some excellent ideas. Have to say, come from the Bromsgrove area, businesses started that those individuals never envisaged they would get the business support, not only to get it off the ground, but to patent it and to bring it forward to market. So thank you, a most sincere thank you. My concerns are about the future availability of having LEP support in whatever guise. We've given UK Shared Prosperity Fund, which was the old European ESIF funding, across to the county to work in partnership. And I'm also very concerned with LGR around the corner, that we continue that on whatever footprint. I think the time has come that we allow the district leaders or economic portfolio holders to join in the conversation. And the reason I say it is, we're trying to expand and upskill our workforce. There's a question mark over the Growth Hub. Unless we allow that continuity and the voices at the table, I think there will be a void when we do get to LGR and shadow authorities, et cetera. And we need that intelligence, we really do. It's not about, you know, I have been in this role now on and off for the last seven years at Bromsgrove, and I get it, having run a business for a number of years as well. So it's really important, and it's about upskilling. If we don't look across the whole piece at how we're going to upskill our workforce in a new market with green technologies and all sorts of other technologies that come around the corner, and I say green because we quite often speak about them, the LEP, we have to acknowledge there's opportunities out there. But collectively, we need to work together on it. You can't do it as one authority, particularly when you're looking at the funding. And I understand there's a shortfall of funding in terms of the LEP. And as councillor Robinson said, £800,000 potentially. But it's about the outcomes, and it's about the data, and it's about how we access that. Now, I've never known business at a time when it's contracting more than growing. The national insurance impacts for business are tremendous. The challenges, we're going to the banks, there's a lack of liquidity in the marketplace. We need to be supportive and they need to be connected with people that can help them, not only to grow their business, but to continue. That is the position we're in with many, many businesses. And guilt's flying as they are, is leading to an interest, the interest rates not coming down at the rates that they should do. And our genuine value for money in our purse is far diminished from where it was even 18 months ago. So I would ask that, because we talk a lot here about the LEP lobbying, local partners lobbying, but what is Worcestershire County Council doing to lobby? What is the Cabinet member doing, please, councillor Amos, to lobby for future funding? 50% of the country hasn't got a devolution deal. How's this government dealing with the lack of devolution deal with that 50%? Because you can't shut 50% of the country down in terms of productivity and GVA. And our GVA figures aren't good at the moment, and they need to be improved. So I would ask that the County Council actually collectively lobbies to get funding in, be under the auspice of the UK Shared Prosperity Fund. But the question is as well, has to be asked of government, what happened to the old ESIF funding? You know, we brexited off the back of £400 million a day going into the National Health Service. Where is the ESIF funding going and what's the forward trajectory and what's the anticipated outcomes? There is a paper coming called Get Worcestershire Working, I believe, coming to the Cabinet this week. Off the back of that, surely this is our opportunity to do a full Lincoln Report and a full request to government. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Okay, so some good questions in there, which I'm going to invite the politicians initially to have a go at. And then I'll invite Paul if he wishes to add. Joe, you're more than welcome to contribute, as I just catch my eye. You know, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you've got something, please, please make sure I know, and then I will definitely ask you. So what is the County Council doing about lobbying the government to ensure some sustainable funding going forward? I just learned to the melt there what the County Council network collectively might be doing as well. Who wants to go on that? That's definitely a politician's question, because it's all about lobbying.
We are involved through CCN in terms of the general lobbying. And people will know there's an awful lot of conversations with government at the moment about future funding. So we're covering everything from the Fair Funding Review through to, you know, individual items. One of the difficulties here is that actually there was a change in government policy about, I don't know how many years ago, two or three years ago, where actually, the money used to come to the LEP and it didn't go to the county councils. We were absolutely excluded, it went directly to the districts. So in effect, it has been taken away from us in terms of that. So in effect, it has been taken away from us in terms of that position. Now, we are lobbying in terms of the future and of course around LGR and we are, through the CCN, making these points around very much about what Karen said, about where has this money gone? And whether or not it goes to the districts or it comes to us is irrelevant, what is the future of the Shared Prosperity Fund? And I have to say, there are some difficult explanations coming back from civil servants, which are, if you want to access more money, have a mayor. And that is the reality and we are saying to them, okay, we'll have a mayor, so how quickly can we have one? And what we're told is, well, we've got to go through all this process and wait and see and put your bid in and we'll go. So we are very much at the behest of government at the moment. It is really, really frustrating because we've got these practical issues day to day where there isn't seem to be any real position other than if you want to access more money, get yourself an elected mayor. Now, it is a real concern to me and it is something we are lobbying through CCN on, exactly the point that councillor May made, on the basis of, if it's going to take till the earliest 2028 or 2029 to have a mayor, and then they've got to get up to speed and they've got to think about where they're going to be, that could be 2030. So are we saying for the next four years, we're not going to get any significant growth money for Worcestershire? That cannot be right. And we're really pushing that hard through CCN. I have to say at the moment though, to not much avail, and the more that members in meetings like this can raise that issue and put a spotlight on it, absolutely. This is a political solution, it's not an officer's solution, we've tried that. It will need that political push to get something to change. We can't have a situation where if you've got a mayor, you're going to do really well and there'd be loads of money, and if you don't have a mayor, you can't have one, that just can't be right. The SBF was supposed to cover that gap and if that is the case, then continue it for a few more years until we get to our mayoral position. But, you know, it will have to be that political pressure that will bring that to change.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. I mean, just to throw into the melting pot, we might also choose, Alan, to lobby our county MPs on such matters, as well as the CCN. Now Marcus, I suspect, is going to ask a question about this very issue rather than something new.
A comment and a question, you've slightly stolen my thunder, Chairman, but I think that Paul's take, that he's put very eloquently, is exactly my take on the situation as well. And clearly, and I don't make this a political point, it's a statement of fact, the government want to drive devolution, they want elected mayors, I have a view on elected mayors, but the reality is, that's the current muted music and that's the policy of this government, but it cannot be right that in order to leverage substantial funding for our districts and our county as a whole, we have to wait for an elected mayor, because as Paul says, there's a process to go through. And even if we're all 100% signed up as politicians across our political spectrum, that that's what we wanted, it's not going to happen overnight and, you know, and I know we have a learned member of the Labour Party in the room, but I try not to make this political because all governments are as bad as each other when they talk about timelines frankly, and something's going to be done by the spring and then it's the summer and then it's the autumn, then it never happens at all, you know, and I have a view on local government reorganisation and how far the can might eventually be kicked down the road.
Can we go with a question at some point?
Sorry, sorry, I haven't said anything yet though, Chairman, you know, and I'm taking my lead from you who's... So the question is, and you stole my thunder, what are we doing to lobby in particular our two MPs in the county that will have a greater ear to government than the other four frankly?
Okay, so that was back to Alan, I think, and councillor Waterton. A quick response?
Yes, this will be an answer to a question, Chair, just so you're clear. The LEAP board have of course already written to our MPs, and I think there's one advantage I would sense here, that they're a mixed bunch in that they come from two different parties, to prove that this is a cross-party, non-party political issue. I'm more than happy to pursue it with my own MP, I don't know where that will get, but I'll certainly be willing to have a go. But in all honesty, given the uncertainty of the government's own plans, the MPs need to get their act together to work for Worcestershire, frankly, whoever they are. But the LEAP board has already contacted them and we await their response with some, well, not bated breath, but with some breath.
Okay, I'm going to move on. Lyn, you were waving at me a moment ago, was it about this point or is it something else?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the invitation to participate. I agree with a number of the points that have been raised. I do think, to some extent, actually, it's a distraction from actually scrutiny of LEAP and the LEAP's record and mode of operation, if I can put it that way. So I share concerns about future funding. There is lobbying around, with MPs around the future of UK SBF. I think if we can just kind of park that for now, you know, I have a number of more specific questions. The Chair of the LEAP, you know, paints a picture, it's been in place for 10 years, it's been building relationships and achieving. My question is really that after 10 years, why is the governance of that completely unaltered? The last government said that LEAPs should be disbanded and the roles taken on by local government, and the current government has reiterated that. What we have in this report to the scrutiny board is a level of self-justification. I absolutely share the vision, the importance for inclusive growth and economic development. I am hugely frustrated of the leader of a district council that is central to Worcestershire and, you know, an economic and cultural hub. Out of the six district councils, there's only allowed to be one representative for the North and one representative to the South. I have no voice with the LEAP, I mean, you'll see within the report, the LEAP is happy to take funding and money from district councils, but we have no voice. Last year, special opportunity, had a visitation from the LEAP in order to come and listen, they came and listened and the things that I said did not appear in the subsequent report. This is not, this is not inclusive growth, this is not partnership working. And so, you know, given the changes and given the modern, the current context, I wrote to the LEAP earlier this year that, you know, now that there's been a change in administration on the county council, we are actively working towards local government reorganisation, could now we expand representation from district councils. And that's been a live conversation in a non-party political fashion ever since I was sort of joined the room of county leaders. So I made that request and why has the decision been made to continue to exclude four out of the six district councils?
Okay, that's a very clear question. Just to elaborate on that for a moment, the Chairman of the LEAP will recall a letter I wrote when I was leader of Moreton Hills on behalf of the leadership of the six districts. About two or so years ago, Typhlides, I did get a response, it was a full response. Did you get a response when you wrote?
I did, it was diplomatically worded and very polite, but the answer was still no.
Right, Paul, you've heard the question?
I guess just a matter of information on two points. First of all, the governance arrangements for the LEAP have been in place since the beginning and there has never been a formal request to change that from the partnership board itself. But there has always been representation from the six districts in the county through a northern representative and a southern representative, both of whom have seats on the board. So as a matter of fact, it isn't technically correct that there has always been a route, as there has been, as you know from yourself, for all the districts, to voice their opinions and to get feedback from the board itself through their two representatives. What hasn't always been as effective as it might have been, as we've discussed, is the way in which we engage and communicate, but that has been a process that has continued since the beginning of the LEAP's establishment. And there is no doubt that we have got better, I think, at making sure that those channels of communication and the availability of information to all the districts and representatives from them is better than it was and it is. I think the last point I would make in the context of the existential threat to the LEAP going forward is that I, and I'm sure I speak for the rest of my board, the key issue for us is to ensure the continuity of the value that the LEAP generates, not as Paul, and I absolutely echo, we're not seeking to retain the LEAP as a brand, as a structure, it is the value that that partnership working has delivered to the economy that we're all so anxious to retain. And therefore, my view about whatever future structures, representations or governance may apply to whatever body follows or the LEAP continues is open for further discussion in the sense that if the funding routes to enable the continuity would require us to re-evaluate the membership and structure of the board, then absolutely we are open to doing that. Thank you.
It kind of follows the money, I think is what you're saying. Lyn, anything you'd like to respond to from what you've just heard? And then I'm going to come to Seb and Richard.
There are lots of things I could say, Chair, thank you. The self-perception of the LEAP is maybe not shared by other partners and other people. In the last 18 months, I have, in particular, gone to great efforts, I have had a series of meetings with partners, businesses, big employers within Worcester City. I have a pretty wide network, I talk and I listen to lots of people. Let's just say at this point in time that not everybody values the LEAP as much as the LEAP themselves appreciate. So as an example, you know, gosh, improved communication, I get sent the minutes of the LEAP board. I do take the trouble to read them when I can manage the time. At the last meeting in July, they were, looking at the slide deck, was a really good assessment of all of the new government initiatives around economic development, inclusive growth, boost for skills, full of opportunities, vision, et cetera. I was not party to that conversation, I have found the slides really useful, because it's given me information that I, you know, in one place that was helpful. I'm not allowed to be part of that conversation. And there was no minuteed action. Where actually is the vision, the proactive response, the bidding, to be part of what our government, what this government is wanting to deliver for our residents? It feels, and where is the proactive bidding? Where is the vision? And I'm afraid, you know, there are some parts within the LEAP that are working well. Please, no.
We've got the gist of what you were saying there. The question, where is the vision? I think in part you've explored that this morning already, but Lyn, can I just ask you a question? As a district council leader, in those circumstances where you were looking at those minutes and concerned about them, did you think about using the South Worcestershire District Council rep on the LEAP as a means of communicating that? I'm just wondering what relationship or whether you have or have not got with the nominee from the South and the nominee from the North? I'm just wondering if that actually practically just isn't working?
No, it isn't practically working, that I'm not, I'm not really aware of a network, the people who are the chosen reps don't necessarily reach out to colleagues and we don't know what's on the agenda. We might, having an agenda doesn't tell you what the content is going to be.
Not a long response, please, about the vision, because you've already explained some of that this morning, but the question is, what is the vision? And I think earlier, Lyn, you said, this isn't partnership. So two things, two quite bold statements there, who would like to respond?
Yes, I'm not quite sure where to begin. I mean, the idea that there isn't a vision for the Local Enterprise Partnership, I think speaks to perhaps the lack of engagement in the many publications, the strategic economic plan we've produced, all of which are prefaced by, one of the principal values of the partnership is having that long-term vision. This was an economic plan we reviewed at the beginning of my chairmanship three years ago, dated 2040. Now, I don't know, different people see vision as different things, but it's certainly very much the desire of the LEAP to have that long-term view of where the Worcestershire economy needs to be and what needs to happen in order to maximise the chances of us getting there. So as far as I'm concerned, there is absolute vision crystallised in several documents that we published over the last 10 years, and that vision has been augmented and modified, of course, as times have changed, but there has always been a vision leading the activities of the LEAP as a whole. So that's the first point. I think the second question, still I'm somewhat confused that there wasn't an answer to your question, Lyn, as to why there was no community. There seems to be no engagement with the representatives north and south that exists to represent the council, and I didn't hear the answer to the question, but it sounded as though that linkage doesn't exist, which is part of, I think, the position that expresses some of the opinions that have just been expressed.
Okay, I'm just going to ask you that bold statement that we heard, and you two will come back in, I promise, that I'm just trying to tease out here, as best I can, the questions that have been asked. I'm sorry if you're definitely going to have as much as time as you want, Richard and Seb, but it's important that we do this properly, isn't it, and answer the questions properly. So the second question was about this isn't partnership. How would you respond to that?
I think, I think you've heard the evidence coming from several people who've spoken at this meeting already, as well as the summary of report that was presented to this, that is clear evidence of there being partnership working that has delivered value that otherwise would not have been delivered. And that's been one of the key elements of progress the LEAP has made, in my view, over the last 10 years. It's that instead of those silos, as effectively they have been around supporting businesses, education and very little on the innovation front, but what such as they have been, wasn't coherent, they weren't knitted together, they didn't have a common strategy. And that's been the real value of the progress I've seen in the last 10 years, is that everybody, everybody, it's not perfect, of course not, and that there are some businesses who perhaps don't see the value of the LEAP, that's possible, but the major employer in Worcestershire, Worcester Bosch, sits on the board and has been an active, engaged member of the board for the last 10 years or more. So you can't please all the people all the time, I accept that, but the aggregate position surely of the businesses and representatives and views that you've heard here today is that it's a lot better and delivers a lot more value to this economy than it would be without that partnership working.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to, because I'm conscious that Seb and Richard have, and I know that Marcus and Karen want to come in as well, but would you mind if I go to them, because they haven't said anything at all yet? Seb's been waiting patiently, then the member for St John's will be speaking. Seb?
Perfect, thank you. I'm not sure if this is the only time I'll talk today, so I'll try and do all my questions at once. I think, yeah, I wish councillor Amos very well in his lobbying. I know as a former member of both Labour and Conservatives, I'm sure the MPs and you will find common ground to make sure this continues. And I think what's really important as well, and you did mention it in the original introduction, which is when I put my hand up, is approaching high net worth individuals. As we know, we are currently on a mass exodus. I find it interesting that some colleagues say- currently on a mass exodus. I find it interesting that some colleagues say that the government are focused on growth. The facts don't lie that we're not growing. But what are we going to do if we have this exodus of high net worth individuals? You know, what is our Plan B? If we're not going to have a huge pot of money, if the central government just seems to be doing whatever they want to do to destroy business, what is our Plan B?
Well, in terms of the angel network that, as Luke described at the beginning, we are about to launch in November, I think to the point at national level of the risk of high net worth individuals deciding to move elsewhere is represents a very low risk in terms of the particular group of individuals that are thirty or so, with whom I've met every single one of them over the last year. And they are very enthusiastic about the idea of being in a position to contribute to the continuity and growth of some of the great innovations that occur, that continue to be generated within the county and specifically from Beta Den itself. So I don't think there there is a great risk. But the answer truthfully to is there a Plan B? No. That we have no Plan B. This is a private sector initiative, effectively, that is seeking to use capital from those HNT individuals. But were they, for whatever reason, decide that either the vehicle and the opportunity or the political support was such that their capital was at risk, yes, they would go elsewhere. But I don't think that's very likely, having discussed over the last six months, that specific issue with all of those thirty individuals. So the risk is small, but there's no compelling Plan B if they all decide to go to Marco tomorrow. So.
Thank you. Yeah, an interesting one that I my, if I were sort of more involved, I'd perhaps say that we need perhaps cast the net wider. You know, we can't base it on there's not a risk at the moment because, you know, all the indications for a budget later this year are not looking positive for individuals. And I don't really think, you know, all of us agree that it's a great initiative, but evidently there's no central government support. I think the chief exec sort of highlighted that beautifully, that we are in somewhere that we really want something, but A, the central government doesn't necessarily support it day to day. So I really would implore, we have to look elsewhere. If this budget is as disastrous as we predict, where do we go? I know that's more of a hypothetical, but we have to think about that.
I think, you know, we've been in conversation with those high net worths. And obviously, you know, they are going to look at that position. There are schemes that are in place currently. What happens at the budget is obviously, you know, we can't kind of forecast that. But there were two schemes that mean actually this investing becomes pretty tax efficient, either through pension or through investment. But yeah, if the sort of Plan B that I would say is these companies are going to grow slower because there's less capital available for them to invest. So it then becomes an issue of pace rather than an issue of will it ever happen? And I suppose that's where we've seen the likes of Beta Den come in and actually support and push these entrepreneurs along a bit quicker. And I suppose there's the challenge in terms of if if the resource is not there, then they're going to just go slower.
Seb, anything else? Okay, Richard.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair. I think the biggest problem for the Worcestershire LEP is it's never been really an adequate successor body for advantage West Midlands. And I think that's the biggest problem which we've had, is that it does not pick up the work which this predecessor authority did. It was just been said that not a lot of businesses will potentially value the LEP. I would counter that by saying a lot, not a lot of businesses actually know the LEP exists. I run a small business in this county. I've been operational with another number of small businesses in this county. They don't even know you exist. As far as they're concerned, you're an irrelevance. And I think that's part of the issue which we've got here, that you're not communicating to business which matter, which is small business. When I do a comparison with the statistics in Warwickshire, for example, in Warwickshire, unemployment rate is 2.2%. In Worcestershire, it's 2.5%. The average wage in Warwickshire is £35,000 per annum. In Worcestershire, it's 32,000. And when it comes to the biggest statistic, which I'm worried about, the children not in educational training or or full time educational training, 1,318 in Worcestershire, 203 in Warwickshire. Why are Warwickshire doing so much better than Worcestershire? Why are we a low paid, low skilled economy with higher unemployment? Why are you failing so drastically compared to our neighbours?
Okay, so two questions I can pick out of that, just to make sure they are answered. One is why are we not doing as well as Warwickshire, which is a statistical neighbour, is the claim. And the second thing, you're not doing any for small businesses?
I take the second question first before handing over to Gary for the first question. But the the issue, as I'm sure you're aware, you all know, there are 20,000 businesses in Worcestershire. We have a very limited resource that we don't overspend in terms of our own PR to promote the LEP. The activity here is very much to support, as we best see fit, the growth of business in Worcestershire. But it's a reality, whether we like it or not, that the Pareto principle will remain, that eighty percent of the jobs that will be added to the Worcestershire economy will come from twenty percent of those businesses. Not every business is either in a position or or has a strategy to grow and add employment. And therefore, the business support strategy has shifted slightly to being a wholly reactive one, where any business that is aware of us can pick up the phone and ask for help and seek routes to funding and guidance. That's been the model that has been. The risk, in our view, was that some of those twenty percent that offer the greatest prospects of growth economically to the county, and the jobs and increased GVA will go with them. We wanted to make sure that they, first of all, primarily, were certainly aware of the ways in which the LEP and its partners could foster and accelerate that growth. Because strategically, that's the best way to ensure that we meet those objectives in our vision and that those short term targets that Luke enunciated earlier are most likely to be achieved. So I can accept in principle that there will be many small businesses across of those 20,000 in the county that up to this point have not had a proactive call from our business support group to find out what we can do to help them. With the resources we've got, it's impossible to proactively approach 20,000 businesses. And therefore, we took the view that with the resource, the best use of the resources that we do have will be to primarily be in a position to be sure that we could proactively make the high growth businesses, the twenty percent, absolutely aware of everything that we could do to accelerate and secure their futures. Because in our view, that was in the best interests of the Worcestershire economy. So that's the answer to the second question. And to the first one about Warwickshire.
So I think this probably links to Paul, the chief executive of the County Council's point around fairer funding. If we just look at some of the allocations, and these are historic, so this is not a point necessarily about the current government, but necessarily this is the circumstances we find ourselves in. If you look at our adult education allocations, we get £1.45 per resident in Worcestershire, opposed to our, opposed to Warwickshire, who is the next lowest in the country, where we get, they get £3.54. So these are some of the stark issues that we've got around fairer funding that don't work for Worcestershire. If we look at the youth hub, and councillor referred to the kind of neat position, obviously the skills work is delivered under the county team, but we work with DWP in the youth hub. We're in year three. We're seen as one of the best ten youth hubs in the country by DWP themselves. And we've had this year through over 366 participants of those, 183 have gone into employment. Obviously, not all want to go employment. Some of them want to go into training, but also wrapping health and support around them. Redditch, the youth hub, which is in year one, has seen 300 participants, 88 of those have moved into work. So the work that we are doing is working with Worcestershire. And we've got to recognize two things. One is the business structure that we've got in Worcestershire versus, let's say, Warwickshire. I mean, JLR does make a difference to those numbers. We can see it nationally, not just locally. But also, I would add that the programs and the money that we do spend is efficient and effective in boosting the economy and where we are.
I'm frankly shocked that we're concentrating our time and resources and effort into supporting twenty percent of businesses in this county and ignoring the eighty percent. The small one man, one woman band micro industry in this county will grow into becoming a larger industry. By ignoring them, you are ignoring the potential growth for this county. But I want to come on to another aspect.
Hang on. I do think people have the right to reply.
Okay.
To that one in particular, I would like to reiterate that that wasn't what I said. What I said, that we change the balance in terms of the way we use those resources to make sure that proactively we're able to support those twenty percent that will deliver eighty percent of those jobs. But we are still there for every business in the county, small, medium or large, who, given that they are aware of the growth hub and business support services within the LEP, we will answer the telephone to every single one of them. The difficulty is, it is impossible for us to make the call to 20,000 businesses. That's the point I was trying to make.
Yeah, but the evidence doesn't support that, does it? When eighty percent of businesses don't even know you exist. If I move on to a slightly different aspect, and it's an issue I raised with councillor Amos a few, a few weeks ago, in the growing demand for rural industries and skills to be to be improved in rural industries, industries such as blacksmithing, sheep sharing, dry stone walling, thatching, things like that, where there's a great demand for apprentices from businesses who operate in this county, who want to train the next generation. The nearest alternative for education and training for those pupils, those children, those young people, is in Hereford or Ludlow. It doesn't exist in Worcestershire. So we're missing out yet again on young skills, young ability to actually grow at businesses, small businesses, which could operate tremendous return for the for the county by not actually having any partnerships with educational bodies to establish skills in rural industries. Is this something which you're going to be looking forward to in the future, to establish a partnership which enables training to take place in Worcestershire, so kids don't have to travel as far away as Hereford and Ludlow to gain these basic skills?
Okay, I'm going to ask Alan if he would like to respond to that. But just for clarity, Alan, are you a board member at the moment of the LEP?
Yes.
I just wanted to be clear about that. And so, Alan, you're more than able to, especially since you've already had some correspondence on this matter. Would you like to respond to what Richard has said?
Yes, I hope all questions are that easy. He's absolutely right, and we are having discussions about that. It is not easy because simply there needs to be a certain minimum level of demand before courses can be put on. But I agree with him entirely. We need those courses. And I ideally would like them in Worcestershire. If they're not in Worcestershire, we will do our best to make sure they are available as easily as possible, because he's absolutely right. Chair, could I just respond to a couple of other points at this point, or would you rather do it some other time?
Could you perhaps just hold on to that, just because I don't necessarily want to remind me.
Yep.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just say, from reading this report, that the Worcestershire Local Enterprise Partnership, I believe, is fantastic. And we should be completely behind this. I think it's brilliant for business. Now, I know that 308 employers have been involved with the Skills Boost Programme, upskilling 1,230 through 1,564 courses. So more than one worker has received more than one course, upskilling. Now, this is valuable. You know, as someone who's upskilled themselves from being absolute nobody to being a qualified electrician, I've gone from being able to earn £12, £14 an hour to over £35 an hour. There has to be value in this. Is there, you may not be able to answer right now, but how is the impact of training measured and the employment outcomes? How are we able to sort of measure this? And also, I want to add another question, that the winding down of the Worcestershire Local Enterprise Partnership hasn't just happened overnight. I believe it was, we first knew about this March 2023. And as a strategic authority, I think we have failed this partnership. We have, or the previous administration have failed it. Because I can't see that anything strategic is put in place because it's all suddenly laid on the table. It's a big issue. Maybe we could have an answer to my question as to what has been put in place to try and keep this going, knowing that it was going to be wound down March, we knew March 2023. Thank you, Chair.
If you'd like the political answer from one of us, I think that would be more relevant than going back and asking somebody who's the current incumbent, if you don't mind me saying, chairman.
Chair, I would like to know specifically what they knew was strategically in place. So I would like to know directly from them, please.
So what we're going to do, Karen, is we're going to have two goes at this. We're going to get the officers, then I'm going to come to you, Karen, or Marcus as well. So we're going to have two goes at this. What did we or didn't we know in the last two years? And could we have prepared better? I think is the question. Paul.
So we did know. And I think, actually, it's a, it's a really good story. We've already heard in this meeting that there was huge pressure for us not to have a LEP at all. And if you look around the country, a number of councils just abandoned it there and then and moved away from it. And I think they are reaping what they sow at the moment in that, I think quite rightly, some very senior business colleagues are looking and saying, well, if we were that valuable, why didn't you keep us going? Nobody really fought for us. And trying to rebuild those networks, I think, will be much more difficult, which is why I said what I said at the beginning. I think we owe it to business. They give their time to come and do this. I know it's, you know, there are different views about how it should be governed and one thing and another, and that's fine. People will always have opinions. But ultimately, we have run this for ten years. We have maintained relationships. And we have done some great things. Could we have done more? Always. It's the same for public service, wherever you are, isn't it? You can always do more. But we have had some great successes, and we and we should be rightly proud of those. Actually, the previous leader, Simon Gerretie, was very, very supportive of the LEP. And I can remember the conversations at cabinet, which is probably why Karen and Marcus are keen to say, because it came regularly, didn't it? Because this has always been discretionary spending. And actually, since 23, we've always had no money. And so these were very, very difficult decisions to balance against things like investing in children's and adults and core things that we have to do. But they did. They did, they couldn't necessarily replace all the funding from what was the ESIF grant, you know, that were many, many millions of pounds. But they were absolutely clear as a political group that they wanted to maintain the relationships with business, show the support and show their backing to them by keeping the organisation going. And they have done that. And I've said at the beginning of the meeting, we've still got enough money to see us past LGR, such that we won't lose the relationship. What we're trying to now think about is, where can we get other money from so that we can keep doing the services work as well? And I think, you know, actually, that that was probably as much as they could do strategically. And, you know, to be fair to the new administration coming in, they've maintained the same position. So I think, you know, that's why I said, I think everybody probably agrees that it's an important relationship. Yes, you can always change it, and that's up to members to do. But but ultimately, having the ability to talk to very senior business people is very important. And we've had some other, you know, really good successes. We talked about Worcester Bosch being on the board and various other things. People will remember there was this push to remove gas boilers and various other things, that we were really instrumental in helping them get into government and various other things to to speak to people about doing that. So it's not always just about the service growth and things that we do. Really good relationships, we must try and keep them where we can. But but I do think strategically, they did, from my point of view as an officer, bearing in mind I know what the other priorities were and the other pressures were, I think they they did actually stick their neck out and say, no, we're going to keep this.
Thank you, Paul. I'm going to ask either Karen or Marcus, who were directly involved in the previous Conservative administration, if they would like to respond to Matthew's point.
Yes, thank you very much indeed. The previous administration had a very clear plan for the council. And one of the key components of that was economic development. And we put money in it. That's why you have your £800,000 reserve, and now that you're still able to draw down. We recognise the fact of what upskilling people did, you know, and you often hear me talk about the wider determinants of health. And this is about having a job and upskilling and addressing those parts of our community where we have health disparities. So it was upper and foremost. It's really important, and it's a shame we have to get back to a political It's really important, and it's a shame we have to get back to a political matter where you try and say, we didn't. Look, the current situation is now, you're running this council, and at some point, you've got to get a plan and get something there to say what your key components are and your forward trajectory. We collectively, as a cabinet, made a very considered effort to make sure that we did, we put money into it, but also, we did many things like attend the apprenticeships balls and things, to support our workforce across the whole of the county. You know, we've been there, we didn't just talk about it, we walked the walk. When we had dinners, we sat down and we discussed with the people, the great people that develop industry around our county, we had the conversations, and often that networking is really, really important. It's a key component in that connection. And I come back to the point, and I'm going to use this opportunity, you know, average earnings in Bromsgrove are £37,040. We're way above the rest of the county. But what do I aspire for? I aspire for the whole of the county, to get the greatest amount of income, to have the greatest income, and also the greatest set of skill set, because the whole county benefits. Moving forward, we need to be looking at economic development and investing in it. And I come back to the point, we have local government reorganisation. With local government reorganisation, we have more than a potential void on this now. We don't know what the future holds, we'll move to a shadow authority in 2027. I don't want businesses paying the price of LGR. So my question comes back is, what are you going to do to address it? Because we're going all round the reek in here, but we are where we are, and we did have a plan, but our workforce has always been at the centre, and our lives of our residents has always been the centre of everything we do. And that's not the message that I'm clearly getting at the moment. Thank you.
I'm sure you feel better. So Matthew, you asked the original question. Can I just make, I'm sorry to be a broken record here, but can we make sure we're asking questions and getting questions answered? Matthew, is it a question? Frame it as a question.
Thank you, Chair.
It helps a lot. Jenny, I've got you on my list.
I'm very happy with the answer from the officer, thank you. I still have one more question, though. Councillor Udall has already explained that he believes, and he's been around for a while, that this hasn't seemed to exist to people who he has spoken to. So I believe that there has been a failure, not politically, it's with the, you know, you carry things on, don't you? The sort of strategic authority, you know, sort of handed stuff previously, that there has been a failure. And I'd just like the question, please, to just, to admit that there has been a failure in at least advertising the fact that the WLEP exists, and that you could have done more.
Okay, so let's just be clear about the question. You guys haven't promoted LEP well enough, and most people out there don't know you exist. True or false?
False.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. My question actually follows on from Matthew, so I'm hearing about all the investment was kept to keep the LEP going, which I think is wonderful. Reading through the report, there are some really wonderful enterprises and projects that go on. But equally, when it was decided to continue, was there any streamlining done to try and make the LEP more economical, bearing in mind there's going to be less funding for them, or to try and keep the funding going longer? So in particular, when I look at skills, there is quite some generic things that we've been doing as a Worcestershire County Council. Guardians of the Apprenticeship podcast series, for example, is something that lends itself across the country. Could that perhaps not have been funded? There are elements here that I think we could have streamlined, or we could maybe have collaborated with LEPs outside of Worcestershire. There's some great collaboration within Worcestershire with businesses and other partnerships, but perhaps we could have collaborated on the more generic things with other LEPs. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Point of clarification, Chairman, just to say that where you had a LEP and it was within a combined authority, it was absorbed within the combined authority. The LEPs then went to the upper tier authority, which is the county council in this instance for running, and I think you need to make that very clear. Thank you.
So thank you for that clarification. Now, back to the question. Gary.
In terms of efficiency, we have, the way we've changed things, I suppose it's back to this thing, it all depends on the money, doesn't it? You know, the LEP across the team employ about 17 and a half FTEs, you know, it's pretty lean already, and through this year, it's actually got leaner, where we've not replaced staff who've moved on for their own choice. So I think, in terms of those efficiencies, we've always been taking the views of the partners about what we do and how we do it, and also what's important. And by the fact that Luke has shown the data report, we've also been led by the data. I think with these things, the way that the money comes and the evaluation are the two bits. So one is, the money comes with a part-staffing budget that is used to do that, but we've supplemented with additional pieces to make a bigger impact locally. So efficiency is there, and I think the team are always conscious of best use of public money, where those evaluations have taken place, we've shown that, and that's been delivered.
Can I just add to that? Yeah, we are, the council is the accountable body, so we are governed by the procurement framework, so we do do stuff, we are compliant with that procurement framework. And also, if I look at the growth model, which is a national model, there are about 42 growth hubs now across the country, and at the moment, they're managed by government in clusters. So as you'd expect, we're part of the West Midlands cluster, and so we work with the West Midlands cluster at looking at other things that we can do collectively to reduce costs as well. Maybe that's access to third-party data sets and software licensing and that kind of thing, so that we're doing that, getting that economies of scale there, so that we're not doing that 42 different times, and we're trying to identify efficiencies through that route as well. So we do that on an operational level, for sure.
Thank you. It wasn't really around staffing thing, it was more to do with the programmes that we're actually pushing out there. I just feel that knowing that there's an end coming, that we could have streamlined some of these services a bit more, that some are wonderful, and we definitely need to try to keep them going, but there just is, there are some things here, like I said, very generic, that perhaps the government, there might be information already out there on apprenticeships that people can seek without having Worcestershire-specific information on there. When I've looked at these podcasts, for instance, it's the only thing I've just picked up on at the moment, and it's all very generic information, and there's a saving there. I just feel like perhaps there wasn't enough preparation towards winding down to where we are now. Thank you.
Some of the challenges is the funding comes with outputs and outcomes, so you can't, if you're going to take the money, you've got to deliver. And equally, some of it is about, you know, would you go and see, you know, we're quite critical of the national campaigns on apprenticeships, because I don't think employers see them. Actually, employers tend to engage locally and where they're located. But I take the point, you know, those, but sometimes we are, you know, we're basically dictated to by the money that comes through.
Okay, I'm going to now invite my vice chair, and then I'm going to come back to Karen and Marcus, you haven't been forgotten, because I've got you and Lyn as well now. Okay, Roger.
Yes, thank you, Chair. In reading this report, I have to say, I congratulate you on what you've done so far, it's been very good. I think the vision and that you have is going forward is very good as well. I have a couple of questions, really, regarding jobs. You state in your report you've got £28,000 jobs created. Can I ask the question, how many of those jobs were in manufacturing and how many in other industries?
Good question.
So I think the first thing I'd say is that, clearly, the LEP isn't claiming full responsibility for those 28,000, you know, we're part of creating the conditions to make job creation more achievable here. I don't have the breakdown to my fingertips in terms of the manufacturing bit, but I can absolutely get that for you.
Yeah, obviously, manufacturing is a way of generating income. The other question I have is, you say you contribute towards the delivery of 21,500 homes. To what context do you deliver the homes apart from creating jobs?
So part of the homes delivery was a hangover, for want of a better word, of the fact that we had the capital funding. So the capital funding was used to deliver certain schemes and projects around the county, which in some cases opened up access to residential and employment land, and the homes that were built off the back of those schemes are what's captured through that report.
I would probably just quickly add to that, is, what we're really then conscious of is, in delivering the homes, you need the skills. So it becomes a skills conversation as well, and hence construction's been one of those key sectors, and we've probably seen investments like Kidderminster College, but all the colleges have actually invested in construction, and manufacturing, I agree with you, is a critical sector, but we'll get those figures for you.
So let's come to councillor. I was about to invite Karen May to speak, but it sounds like someone's doing it for her. Marcus, go for it.
Councillor May said enough already, so I'll have a.
What are you saying?
And, look, obviously, I'm here as a member of this scrutiny board, but in another place, wearing a different hat, I am the leader of a district council, and I don't necessarily recognise the view of the LEP that one or two other members have articulated. I am very happy in my capacity as a leader of a district, but also as a member of the county council, with the great work that the LEP has done over the last decade. Look, it's not perfect. Could the LEP do more? Yes. There will always be those that say they don't see what the value of the LEP is, particularly, you know, I understand the point about smaller businesses, and I accept that, you know, on the one hand, obviously, it's the major players that sit on the LEP board in terms of business, you know, Carl Arnsen at Worcester Bosch, et cetera. But, you know, the Worcestershire LEP has been here for a decade, and just to repeat what councillor May said in response to councillor Jones's response, the easiest thing that the county council could have done is said, the tap's being turned off, there's no money, let's stop the LEP. But, you know, the previous administration placed great value because we're very pro-business, and we want to drive the growth in this county and allow our businesses to not only thrive, but actually, in the current climate, jolly well exist and survive, you know. And just up the road, we see what's happening with Jaguar Land Rover, and, you know, particularly the knock-on effects with the supply chain, and arguably, that's going to affect some of our small businesses in Worcestershire. And, you know, we wait to see what the government are going to do about it, but from what I heard on the Today Programme this morning, not a fat lot at the moment. And, you know, and I think that also picks up the point in terms of the average salary that councillor Udall referred to in Warwickshire. It doesn't surprise me that theirs is higher, right on the doorstep of Jaguar Land Rover and all the businesses that are attributed to it. But just in terms of the Worcestershire LEP, and Luke made a point about capital, you know, and we were great in Warwickshire because we had a wife and a mistress, and in terms of the Worcestershire LEP and the GBS LEP, which didn't always find, you know, great popularity, but actually, we were, you know, if you're a district and you're able to leverage funding from both LEPs, why wouldn't you? And Luke, as I said, talked about capital, you know, we got one and a half million pounds out of both LEPs to do public realm work in Worcester Street, which has enabled us then to get future high street fund from government, to knock down redundant buildings, we're going to have a regeneration scheme with housing, and it's all pieces of the jigsaw. I don't feel excluded as a district leader. Leader of Redditch Borough Council is the Northern Rep at the moment. If I've got an issue that I need to take to the board, I can email her, I can phone her, and she is there to represent on behalf of the North, and I know Karen quite often subs as the rep. So, you know, I'm less precious about each district having to have a seat around the board, it's a strategic board, you know, and it needs strategic people on there, and I've never really ran with the argument that, you know, in order to influence, you've got to have a seat around the table. I think that the LEP's done a really good job, and I'm very grateful for them coming to present this morning, and I'm perfectly happy with the work they do. And I just have the same worries that, you know, Paul's articulated and Karen's articulated what's next, because the money is going to run out at some point.
Okay. But I'm quite certain we all listened very carefully to what you had to say, Marcus. Okay, now, I have got Lyn on my list and no one else. This is your last chance to bid, if you have something else you'd like to ask, and then I'm going to close the list. So after Lyn, I haven't got anybody at the moment, but if there's anyone here on the board. Anyone on the board or who is coming here today specifically with an agenda item, this is your last call. Right, Lyn, the floor's yours.
Thank you very much. I feel a weight of responsibility at this point in time. Absolute shout-out to the skills agenda and what that's achieved, and councillor, Matthew Jones, sorry, we don't know each other. You absolutely illustrate what that has achieved, what it means, and that it is life-changing for individuals. And for me, it is making that difference to our local residents, our citizens, enabling people to improve their skills and get better jobs. And I want to put on record now that Judy Gibbs does the most fantastic job within Worcestershire. And everybody I speak to knows Judy, Judy delivers on what people are looking for. Within the board, I don't, the board minutes, notes, whatever, I don't see a lot of discussion or vision actually connected around the work that Judy does. Obviously, there's tacit support for it of some kind. My concern is that it's, that the LEP has had too narrow a focus. Yes, looking at Worcester City, because now that's who I'm here to represent, that's the part of the world I care so much about. Yes, Worcester Bosch is one of our biggest employers. I don't know whether it's the biggest, I actually don't have a kind of hierarchy of numbers. Mazac will be a big employer. The University of Worcester is one of my big employers within the city, as is the Acute Hospital Trust. Tourism and the sort of cultural agenda, food and beverage, it will be spread across lots of tiny businesses, but that will employ quite a lot of people within Worcester City. And part of my frustration and criticism with the LEP is that those areas have been of no interest to them, and have not listened to my trying to flag up that. So just to kind of give an illustration, I have met with them.
Lyn, I'm going to be, I'll indulge you to a degree because I have others, but if you're going to start giving me examples without asking any question, I'm going to struggle a little bit. So can you frame it in a question?
Okay, yeah. So my question is, now, the managing director at Worcestershire Acute Hospitals, is there any relationship with the LEP? I'm not aware. Is there any relationship with the LEP? He is really interested in giving more local employment, taking on more local people to build their skills and apprenticeships. He is also interested in trying to give more business, more procurement to local businesses. How can we help with that?
Question.
Just as a matter of information, the university are represented on the board, and Worcester Bosch, as I said, are on the board. The Acute Hospitals Trust isn't, doesn't directly have representation on the board, but certainly are aware, I know, of the activities of the LEP, and as I've said before, we are open to supporting anybody and any organisation that has the desire to grow and develop within the economy of Worcestershire. So two out of three sit of the companies that were mentioned actually sit on the board, and it is a strategic board that provides the guidance and direction and context for every business in this county, not a selected few.
Should I carry on? Because operationally, obviously, skills. Because operationally, obviously, skills is reported to the board. It's one of the key planks of the strategy. And health and care, like manufacturing and construction, is one of the key sectors that we deliver skills boot camps in. So, we are working with that health sector, not just the acute, but social care providers, the whole sector there to actually understand their skills, needs and deliver on those. Because, let's be honest, it probably has taken over as one of our biggest employment sectors in the county, like many other rural Shire counties.
Okay. That is the end of the questioning. Just to follow, a quick one from me, if I may. What didn't go so well? Your reports told me everything has gone well, but what hasn't worked quite so well? You were amongst friends. No one will pick this up in any way. But, you know, nothing is perfect. What hasn't gone well, Paul? Come on, be really candid.
Well, I'll let Gary respond if he wishes. But from my perspective, I think the thing that has been most difficult is within the business support arena. I think, and I certainly echo the comments about the activities and the individuals who've made such great progress within that skills and education pillar. I think the performance of the county at a national level over the last couple of years in terms of coming up that league table, if I can put it that way, to the position we're in now, I think in itself is great testament to the individuals and their commitment to raising that skill level in the county, and I applaud it. In terms of innovation, I'm going at things that are good. I think we've made fantastic progress around innovation with Beta Zen, the funding. The area of business support has come up, is the most challenging for many reasons. First of all, the resource we have is finite, and we'd like to be able to support every single business in the county. Of course, we would. But for me, and I take the responsibility for this as chair, I have to, from the private sector, if we have a finite resource, the first and fundamental question we have to ask ourselves is, how do we make best use of that resource towards the objective, the strategic objective, of maximising the rate of growth of the economy and jobs and GBA in the county? So, that's the driving question. And the conclusion from that was that we had to focus our activities and not do the reverse, to spread them so thinly across every sector and every business that in the end, we would achieve nothing. There is no point in doing that, in my humble opinion. The other constraint, you asked about the difficulties, has been the way the funding, which Luke referred to earlier, the way the funding comes in to the Growth Hub is predicated on delivering against specific targets that you are forced to accept if you want the money. And I have to say that I've been openly critical of the way that the government funding is really driving an information draw back to Whitehall, rather than the outputs from that funding and measuring the value added. So, it's input-driven, not output-driven. And as someone who comes from the private sector, that is not the way you're ever going to utilise funding effectively. You want to be measuring outputs and value add, not how many phone calls you made last week in order to tick the box that enables you to continue to get the funding. So, that's my, that's the most disappointing part because it's very difficult to make progress in that area, to give us the freedom to do even more of the good things that the team have done, and I congratulate them all. And I would just like to add, because it's happened several times, the mention of support, I want to say publicly, that the degree to which the councils and in general the district councils have supported the LEAP over the last, at least certainly since I've been there, has been fundamental to delivering much of the value that we've talked about today. And I would like to thank them on behalf of the board for doing so. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Paul. So, we're now at a position in the meeting where we're going to... Oh, Gary, just a quick one.
Because you wanted what didn't go well, so you might as well have my two penneth for it. The funding conversation is not untypical. So, LEAPs have been funded by the last government. We were on one-year cycles, a two-year cycle was fantastic because actually, you can plan for that period of time. I think the bit, so this is conversely, what we've done well is things like Beta Zen, the Growth Hub, the skills work, we've actually taken a long-term view. But actually, the money's always been on one or two years. And that, sometimes that confirmation of funding comes very late in the financial year. So, like we said, sat here today, there's no question that there is a, you know, a funding challenge for us all because it's a partnership. But also, you know, sometimes we, how far can we let that run is a challenge, I think, for us all. And sometimes we need to be brave, and sometimes we need to make the right decisions at the time with the information that we've got. So, I think what could we have done better is, god blimey, imagine a three-year run. We'd have had time to plan and maybe plan some exits and, you know, also try some things that we didn't try because you thought, actually, we haven't got the money. So, I would probably add in that piece.
That's been really helpful. Thank you. So, what we're going to invite board members to do now is to consider what, if anything, they would like to do in terms of actions on the back of the two hours, nearly, I think, nearly, two hours. We've had this morning with a really good assortment of people from the LEAP and from local councils as well. So, I'm going to have a couple of goes at this. It's not going to be easy because I'm quite clear there's a widespread view on some of these matters, and it may not be possible to draw consensus. I don't want to go down to the root of voting because the evidence should stick up, stack up for itself rather than any vote one way or another. I think that would be disappointing. If we have to go down that road, we will. But let's see if we can draw some evidence, what we've heard this morning, and create some outcomes now. The big question is, so what? You've heard all this, so what? Can I suggest one that might find unanimity? Is in relation to lobbying both the local MPs and the CCN for some clarity about the likely funding streams to replace the old UK Shared Prosperity Grant, whatever it was called, in the past. So, can we agree that we would encourage those that should to engage with their local MPs? The district council network as well to a degree, but it's mainly the county council network I'm thinking about now. And I think we need to make our voice really loud about that because it doesn't seem we've been connecting with MPs particularly well on this matter. In fact, I don't know how well we connect with the local MPs. Anyway, I don't know about that. Does anyone disagree violently with that as an outcome?
No, I'd go a step further. I'd write as an OSPB board to the Secretary of State for Business and ask for the funding for Worcestershire.
Okay.
The old ESIB funding has gone, the UK Shared Prosperity funding has gone, and I think we need some certainty before we do start to dismantle a very well-run local enterprise partnership, please.
Does anyone disagree with that? That sounds an action for me. I'm happy to take it on board. And I'll share any response I get with you all, as a matter of course. So, that's one clearly defined... Yes, Richard?
I don't disagree with what's just been said, but I'm just seeking clarity whether that should be a recommendation for the cabinet member to write that letter or comes to OSPB for it. Just seeking, I'm not sure we've got that authority to write on...
We can write whoever we like, on any subject. We have far more influence than you could possibly imagine.
Yeah, well, you always have, yes. But I'm just wondering whether that's something which we might want to ask the cabinet member to write that letter.
The proposal was from Karen. I certainly will, and will invite others to do this similarly. Okay.
Not the same letter?
No, that's going to be quite challenging, actually. Right, well, we've got one. Sam?
So, can I clarify? There's going to be two letters. The cabinet member is going to be asked to lobby, and the board is going to lobby. Is that what we're saying? There's two actions.
Yeah. And that lobbying will be in relation to the local MPs in Worcestershire, all six and all seven. And I think in many respects, that was the whole nugget of the meeting, was where do we go from here? And we can't go anywhere without some money. The second thing that I picked up, whether it's actually an action or not, I'll leave to you. Throughout the meeting, reference to local government review and how this can divert attention away from the business of adding value to the local economy. And I think Paul made the point, it could be 2.30 before we get out of this hiatus, which is five years away of potential inertia. Now, how can we turn that into an action? I'm not sure we can.
I would suggest that as an OSPB, we write to the Local Enterprise Partnership Board and ask for a pathway of transition around local government reorganisation with the engagement of the district councils as well, as potentially they may have monies that they could inject into this project.
Okay.
Chairman, if I might, one of the things we talked about at leadership board was, and I think there was unanimity, but correct me if I'm wrong, is that one of the things all the leaders were keen on and the chief execs were keen on is, if we're going to have LGR, let's get it done and get it out of the way, whatever the outcome is. What we're worried about is whether or not timelines slip, and I think Marcus looked at that. So, if there is to be a next tranche, can it be done quickly and get on with it? We've all just about finished our bids that are going to go in in November. We're already being told they're not going to decide them until following July. Well, you know, we've only had six months to write them. Why does it take six months to read them? You know, I think there is something about saying, if this is going to happen, because it's not just the LEAP and everything starts to become a hiatus if we're not careful. And the impact on our staff and retention is really difficult because people are uncertain about what their future is. So, as soon as we can give certainty would be the best. And if that's an action in terms of saying, look, we know this is coming, let's get this thing done and out of the way. Because as soon as we've done that, we can get on to devolution.
Thank you, Paul. With regard to that letter we've just agreed we'll write, I think it should also, if you agree, include what we picked up during the meeting about hypothesized funding and short-term funding and that all creating an input rather than an outcome. And I think that's important too, to make sure that when we make these representations, both the portfolio holder, cabinet member and myself, that we include, you know, two-year settlements aren't great. And, you know, when two-year settlements also include sort of very clearly defined what we must do with it, that gets in the way of what we really want to do, and that is improve the outcome. So, it's input-based rather than output. I thought that point was really made well. And we can include that in a letter if you agree.
I'd also like you to say the economy can't be put on hold just because this government has decided to go for local government reorganisation.
Yep, absolutely. So, we can include that about the five-year, potential five-year hiatus. So, I think we're getting quite a complicated letter here, but a very good one. I can see I'm going to be busy on this.
Chairman, would you excuse me?
Yeah.
I've got to go to an ICB meeting, so...
Okay. Okay. Thank you, both the leader and chief exec and councillor for coming. Are there any other outcomes that board members think we should pursue? Matthew?
Yeah, I have one idea. It seems possible, it might not be possible because it seems such a simple idea that... But the WLEAP don't have the resources available, but maybe Worcestershire County Council do. And councillor Udall mentioned earlier that not enough businesses have been contacted. Do they, would Worcestershire County Council have the ability to contact every single business and explain to them about potential, you know, funding that they could fund WLEAP? Is that an option?
Yeah, yeah. Gary, just respond to that.
A similar constraint, I suppose what the moving of the functions did is it brought the teams together into one team. So, you're only, you know, you're talking quite a small team that look after the grants within the county. They would face the same problems. So, it's a hard task to contact everybody and identify that. As we've already defined in this meeting, we do the best we can with the finite resource we've got. So, we get as far as we can with what we've got.
Okay, I think you've got an answer, Matthew. Richard?
Can I elaborate on that, please? I understand that they've got limited resources, but Worcestershire County Council can do it. Any business owner can email as many businesses as they want within a certain area for relatively, not a lot of money, really. And it would generate, if people could, if businesses could fund the WLEAP, it would make that money back. Can we at least consider it as a council?
So, unfortunately, the chief exec and the leader's just left. So, that's really a question for the council, really, I think. I think, Alan, you spoke eloquently earlier on today about how passionate you believed in the LEAP and the support for business generally. Is that thought, whether you can perhaps explore that further in your group room later? About how you might wish to do that?
Yes, I'd be very happy, Chair, to discuss it with Matt. I mean, obviously, there is a feeling that we need to be more, so, open in terms of our existence. And on the other hand, it is a question of resources, so opportunity cost, isn't it? If you do that, you can't do something else. So, I think there is perhaps there's a happy medium in the middle, but very happy to talk to Matt about it to see how we can take it forward. I think I would suggest that rather than put that formally into a letter to the minister.
But it could form a part of an ongoing conversation about how these things might be funded. And just on that very thing, same point, not to be included in the letter, but resourcing business support, I think, was raised earlier and accepted, I think, as an area that we could do better at. But that doesn't need a letter, does it? Roger?
Yes, councillor Matt raised a question about the council sending out an email. Well, social media is a great way of contacting people today. And I would suggest perhaps that the LEAP could put out a social media post, perhaps inviting them to a workshop. And that would, all small businesses would probably have access to that social media.
Okay, is that something you might want to consider at some point in terms of communication and promotion?
Yeah, we use social media activity and all platforms. So, you know, sometimes business hasn't got the time to look at it. But, you know, we certainly work with outwardly promote as far as we can.
Thank you. I've been critical, I know, and I do apologise if I've caused any offence in doing so. But I think it's raised an issue for me which I think maybe we may want to communicate to the LEAP board about, which is ways in which they can consider how they could actually improve their levels of communication, not only with the six district councils, but with employers and small businesses across the county. I don't want to teach them how to suck eggs. I think there are potential ways in which they can do, investigate improving the way we do, what they do in communication, and that's something which I would suggest that we should communicate to them about. Councillor Denham has just been whispering in my ear some fantastic ideas as a response. I know she's not a member of this board, but I do ask you to invite her... Well, I would endorse what she's about to say, if you allow her to speak, on the issues which she thinks also may be worthwhile raising with the Secretary of State.
Okay, Lynne, I will indulge you if you have come this morning.
Bless you. Thank you. What I was, my suggestion is, there are a huge range of new government initiatives. You know, Luke did a fantastic job of a slide presentation on that. My suggestion really is for this board to ask the LEAP as to how... Yes, funding is an issue, but how can the LEAP, what can be done to bring those opportunities to Worcestershire residents? What, how can Worcestershire engage with and get the benefit of all of those government initiatives, you know, industrial strategy, back to work? Well, he knows the slide deck better. All I've done is read his slide deck. How do we get those opportunities for Worcestershire residents?
Okay, so, we're not going to go into question and answering again because we're going to go around and listen, and it's, we're going to be here a few times. I think what we'll say, Lynne, is that that's been well presented, that argument's been well heard, and Luke's nodding, that clearly that will be part of anything going forward. They'll be considering how better to engage and make sure it gets out to... So, everybody in Worcestershire knows of the LEAP. You know, that would be a challenge, wouldn't it? Luke, is there anything?
Sorry, Chief, the point is about, is action. The minute at the board, following that presentation, was just to note it. How can we get proactive engagement and action to bring all those government opportunities or the relevant ones to Worcestershire residents?
So, and I think that's worthwhile of a formal request from this board to the LEAP board in response to today's meeting.
So, Richard, yes, so let's turn that into an action and say we would hope that the board would take on board the comments made by Lynne and endorsed by Richard, and I suspect everybody, that we gather together... everybody, that we gather together all opportunities that may be emerging from government, and try to find a way of best delivering those collectively and not missing any opportunities that might exist. Lyn's nodding. Are you nodding, Luke?
I am nodding, Chair, yeah. So just to reassure OSPB that we are doing that. So the slide presentation that Lyn refers, the government made, some of them were announcements with further information to follow. We continue to track those. There were a couple of funding opportunities at short notice that we did take the opportunity, and we put bids in for to support LEAP activity. Sadly, they, we've heard this week that they weren't successful, but we continue to track. Government have advised that a couple that we are tracking, they'll be releasing more information later this month. As soon as we've got that, we will then get in touch with relevant partners to talk about how can we pull together the best bid to give Worcestershire the best chance of leveraging in that funding. So yeah, the minutes may be flawed, that is the action that we've taken away and that we commit to.
What we're going to do, though, just to pick up the action, we're going to write to Luke and Gary and Paul, reinforcing the comment you've made, unless anyone disagrees, they don't disagree. Now, Seb, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just, obviously in the pre-meet you said just we could use the opportunity to summarise, so just an emphasis throughout it, just to reassure people. I think we all agree that it is a really good initiative, and I don't want it to fall victim to any sort of dodgy-doge type activity going forward. So can we really?
Dodgy-doge?
You know, we don't want any efficiency savings or anything.
Perhaps you could reframe that in a less politically tainted way.
I could do, but can we just make sure that, you know, we do really recommit and we don't just use it as a service we can chuck away when we're looking at saving some money going forward?
Okay, I think the point's been made. I don't think it needs reinforcing in a letter. So I think we've got some actions, ladies and gents. Thank you. I thought that's been a really, you know, really good two hours. It was, it was, thank you for the line of inquiry. Some of the questions were really quite incisive, and some of the answers were very, very good too. So thank you for your attendance. I'm going to give the board a five-minute comfort break, and we're going to reconvene, and we're going to finish by one o'clock. Sorry, I won't repeat all that again. I think you've got the gist of it. So I'm just looking at the panels and those that have met since we last met. We could do with a brief update from you. So who's first?
So I think that's Hosk and Economy Panel.
Okay, Karen Hosk.
We had a very in-depth conversation around engaging neighbours and communities in health improvement. You were at the meeting, Chairman.
I was.
It was an extensive discussion. We're looking to grow on what we're doing. It's with House colleagues as well as public health. Really informative, I felt it was, and I felt it was a conversation you walked away from thinking there were actions that are happening, we can build on that, and a reflection within 12 months, in essence.
Brilliant.
Thank you.
Any questions to Karen on that, there being none? Okay, second one is Economy Panel.
Economy Panel, councillor Hart.
Councillor Hart.
That's me. It was Monday of this week, so we met in this.
Refreshing your memory.
Yes, we met in this very room, and, let me just grab my, and I brought it in as well, because I made some notes.
Oh, sorry, I should give you a bit more.
We started with tourism.
There we are, got it. Right, so we had three substantive, well, two substantive reports and then the usual budget, and we had quite an interesting presentation on tourism, and a positive report on all of the activity that Visit Worcestershire does for us, even though it's a relatively small team and it's only come into being since effectively Covid year in the spring of 2020, and there were some very positive comments. So nothing controversial and no formal recommendations came out of that. It was just a report that ended up really being noted. And then, and pertinence to, I think, one of the cabinet reports tomorrow, and we touched on it today when we were talking about the LEAP, is the government policies to support the Worcestershire economy, and Gary came on Monday to the meeting, and indeed, we touched upon the growth hub and, you know, the Britain Working, Getting Working White Paper, and exactly what this meant for Worcestershire. And again, no formal recommendations, but really, I think I would just echo that the Economy Panel on Monday had similar concerns, frankly, that this OSPB have got today in terms of what does it mean for Worcestershire and where is the money coming from pre-local government reorganisation. And the other report was just the usual performance and budget monitoring for the year, not only in the area of the Economy Panel, and more importantly, the quarter one budget monitoring for the county as a whole. And not surprisingly, you can see the usual predictions in overspending, particularly for children's social care and adult social care, albeit, I think, the other major spend area, home-to-school transport, and I think off the top of my head, our budget is £43 million this year, or there, or thereabouts. I think that that's on target to actually have an underspend, which is fantastic if it does, and I shall believe it when I see it.
The last item, well, the second to last item, actually, because we need to look at the forward plan as well. So this is quite important, actually, guys. I think in the pre-meet we spoke about how we're going to determine which of these five goes forward as a task and finish exercise. Okay, so you have, you need two pieces of paper, you need the little scrap paper that Emma produced with the file on, and you've got on page 14 the criteria we use, point 11, to determine which of those should go forward, okay? Now we could have an elaborate scoring system, but let's just do it in sort of common sense ways and use our pooled knowledge to determine which of these should go forward. So there are five of them, so I'm going to do them in turn, and for me, I'm going to put a cross or a tick next to each to see what's stacking up. You can do your own scoring system if you like, whichever suits you, but we need an outcome at the end of it. So the first one is the council's relationship and services with the gypsy, roma and travelling community. That's what it says. Now, Richard's here as a sponsor of this. I'm not going to give you a huge amount of time to, just a little, a very short bit of time, because the others won't get this if they're not here.
I'm not sure if many members in this room are aware of the joint protocol between the district county council and the police authority, which effectively gives travellers 21 days on any piece of council-owned land as a right, simply because we do not have any transit camps within the county. Well, don't interrupt me, please. There is an issue there because of the failure to be able to provide transit camps means that we have to give 21 days' ability to stay on any piece of council land, as long as they don't cause any criminal damage in doing so. There's also an issue that it's Worcestershire's largest ethnic minority, the gypsy, traveller and roma community, and they do suffer from intense prejudice and discrimination. Legislation does exist to protect their interests. I'm not sure we are fully compliant as a local authority, especially in areas where we do have provision, which is health, education, adult social care and site provision, and children's social care as well. There was an example given to me, we went to a local primary school, told, let me just give you an example.
Because the other sponsors will not have a chance to.
Well, I'll just give you a quick example of a primary school saying they had no travellers in their school at all. When pushed, they discovered they actually had 30. So there's no provision for those children as travellers in their school because the school did not recognise them as an extra, as a specific body, a specific group. It cuts across all services of the county council, and we've never, in my knowledge, undertaken any form of scrutiny exercise into the provision which we provide.
Now, to go down the criteria.
Chair.
Yep.
Sorry to interrupt. Just so I've got a really good understanding, could councillor Udall please explain the 30 children and how they weren't, they weren't treated differently?
Yeah, very quickly, but we're going to say one.
They were considered by the primary school in question as not being travellers because they did not live in caravans. Yeah, but, yeah.
Okay, Richard, I'm going to shut you off at this point, mainly because none of the other sponsors have got a chance to outline their case, okay? So we have to take it at face value from what it says, although you have elaborated. So I'm going to invite you now privately to go down that list and decide where you think it meets the criteria from your point of view. So it's either a cross or a tick, and then you might want to add those up at the end and put it next to the proposal. It's difficult to actually find and answer some of these questions.
Can I ask a question?
Go on then.
My question is, are some of these specific, to specific panels, are known as cross-cutting? And I do wonder if you can highlight which ones are which.
Well, I don't think that's relevant. I mean, that is about what we do with our chosen one, whether it goes to the panel or whether it's cross-cutting. We've got to get to the point of which one, and then we'll talk about how we deal with it. Okay?
So just for clarification, Chair, out of the five options we have here, couldn't we have a show of hands for one, a show of hands for two, a show of hands for three, a show of hands for four, a show of hands for five?
We can, we can do it that way. But I want you to go through, I'm sorry to be petty, I want you to go through the process of matching the criteria against each and every one of them, so it's an objective exercise. I know it's a bit tedious. So it's an objective exercise. I know it's a bit tedious, but can we actually go through that mindset so that we get to the end, we, we can justify what we've, what we've done? So that's the council relationship with services, gypsy, roma and travelling community. So quickly make a decision about which of those criteria is met as best you can. You don't know the answer to some of these. Two.
Sorry, Chair, I think there's a mood in, in the chamber to go to a vote on this.
Yes.
I think we'll do that in a second if, if we may. I'm, I'm pushing you because I want to be able to say to anyone who asks me the question, we went through the criteria. We didn't just do it on the hoof, okay? So I know it's a bit tedious. Can I just help you through it?
Wouldn't we have already done that as pre-read of it? It's the whole point of having the papers.
Well, if you tell me, Josh, you've already done it, that's fine, if that's true. If you've gone through that criteria and come-
I don't know why you're challenging whether that's true or not.
Well, no, if you have done that, okay, if you've done that, then you don't need to do anything more because you'll come, we'll come to you in due course and ask you which one you're going to go with. Others may not have done that, okay? So we're just making sure everybody's gone through that process. I mean, I don't understand what education, health and care plans means, I'll be honest. Yeah, but what, what is it asking to investigate education, health and care plans or provide them?
I'm assuming it's based on the issue of the problems which we all know exist around gaming, but I think that, my view-
On gaming?
On gaining an educational health and care plan. My view is that's a scrutiny investigation for the children's panel, but not, not, not for a cross.
So this, let's be clear about it, Richard. This, we, the board, we instigate the task and finishes. And that can either come through the panels or it can be a cross cutting, okay? That is our, one of our many functions is to, is to instigate that work rather than the panel say, we're going to set up a task and finish. Because we have to take an overall view that matches the resource we've got with-
The OSPB can ask the Children's Services Panel to actually look at this in further detail and investigate as part of its work programme. We're looking at establishing a task and finish group.
So if it's, if, so if it's not included as our outcome, they could have a meeting about it, but what they can't do is set their own task and finish. They can't do that. Because we have to manage the officer resource. That's one of the things we do. We commission that work, okay? That's really important, Richard. Okay, I know I'm being a bit tedious, but I want to be able to walk out of this room having looked at this objectively and come to a conclusion that I can defend. So I think we probably have spent enough time now going through those. So I'm going to, I am going to take a vote now, Josh, which will surprise you. I don't usually take votes. You've got, you can choose one, okay? And the people voting are only the board members. So the first one, the council's relationship and services with the gypsy, roma and travelling community. Is there anyone in support of that being a task and finish? One person says so. Second one is finance and how to reduce the capital spend without having a negative impact on services. And that's one, two, three, four, five. I think we've probably got the winner there, but I'll go through the motions. Public health promotional activity, including the use of social prescribing, keeping active and other preventative work, this is covered by Hosk, yes it is. Is there anyone in favour of that? Zoot.
Well, yeah, covered by the Hosbord, I am.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, that's, that's their role. That's their role. Are we a listening council, including consultations and responses and hearing the views of hard to reach groups? I'm going to stick my hand up for that one. And finally, education, health and care plans. Is there anyone, we should support that. One person. Well, the overriding-
Sorry, I, I do think that should go to children's. I'm not negating it, but I would be fully in support of the children's panel looking at that, Chair.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. They can have a meeting on it. What they can't do is set their own task and finish on it to run simultaneously. So Hosk can do that, some of that work, and the children's panel can do some of that work. So we have very clearly an outcome. I think we need to scope it really carefully because it's a bit general at the moment. I think we need to be really clear about what we're looking at and what we're not looking at. So scoping will be really important. We also need to decide whether it goes to a relevant panel or whether it's cost cutting. Can I ask that we let officers have a little think about how best to deal with that? So is it cross cutting? You could argue it is. On the other hand, it should simply go to the finance panel and, and they could have a look at it. And resources panel.
I, I think it would be useful coming to this panel from the perspective of, of a general level of understanding about capitalisation and how county councils rely upon capitalisation, particularly, dare I say, around schools.
So-
A meeting, I, I would couple into this, meeting our statutory requirement as a county council as well.
Okay, so we need to scope this a little bit. Sam, what are your initial thoughts?
So if you leave that with us, we'll get terms of reference drafted, which will come back to the board for approval. So you can add in any other bits and pieces and then you can decide who will be the lead member for it. Then we'll get the membership.
Okay, so you'll give us a draft scoping.
It'll come to the board for approval.
The board next time. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Final bit of business, I also draw your attention to, we did say we're going to do this earlier on in meetings, the future work programme. And look at whether there's something that you think we should be looking at before it gets to Cabinet or council. So obviously we've missed the September date, so that's irrelevant. So we're now looking at the October date of the 23rd. County Hall update on site options and disposal.
So if we can just say, Chair, that's coming to corporate and communities on the 20th, 20th of October.
Perfect. Poirot Goldbridge. Permanent restoration, same as councillor Amos has been very busy with that. Half of it is mine. The one half of the river team is, is my, in fact, it's my part of the bridge that's down.
So it's your fault?
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'm not sure there's anything that we need to do with that. Worcester City Secondary School update on school sufficiency and place planning. That's quite contentious.
That will also be part of the discussion on County Hall.
Okay, six ways.
So, sorry, can I just come back at that? It, it's not just about Worcester City though, it's, it's the cumulative impact on the whole of the county. So I do think we need to pick this up as a, as a subject matter, please, Chair.
And can we do that? Sam?
Yeah.
Can we do that? Where does it go and when?
We would have to speak with the Chair of the Children's Panel and it would, it would come into children and families.
Do they meet before the 23rd of October?
They do, but the agenda for next meeting's already set. We went to yesterday.
How are they going to look at that? How are they going to look at that? When does OSPB meet again? Shall we do it here?
Well, just, just say, Chair, and you are looking at LGR at that meeting.
Well, I, I don't think there's any other way because you said the children's panel's already got a full agenda. I think we have to do it. Well, make sure we only have two items, the LGA review and that. That's substantive enough. Is that okay? Because if we don't-
Just to clarify, the LGR, is this an update ahead of, because the submissions have to be in by the 28th of November, so this is an update. So that should be quite a quick agenda item.
Saying what we're going to do basically.
Yeah, please. I, I think the sufficiency placing, place planning is really important. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to incorporate that into our next agenda, saving the children's panel having a separate meeting. West Midlands Regional Safe Centre, Cabinet Member Decision Resource Date, Centre Provision for Adults and Learning Disabilities. 27th of October. Why is that 27th? Is that?
Cabinet Member Decision, not the-
Ah, okay. And over the page. Social care local accounts. This is now into the November meeting. Local government reform, well, Marcus, we just made that point that it's, it's on the 20th, but we'll, we're going to see what they come up with at the next meeting. Review capital mod budgeting report, okay, that doesn't need to, treasury management, that doesn't see, what's the safeguarding adults annual report?
That does go to the adults panel, Chair.
Okay, draft budget and medium term financial plan, that's now into January after Christmas.
And all scrutiny-
All scrutiny powers will-
Panels will have the opportunity to look at that.
All scrutiny powers will look at that stuff. What's the local nature recovery strategy? And call in the notices. Ladies and gents, we are done. And it's not even one o'clock. Thanks ever so much for your attendance this morning. I thought it was a bloody good meeting, actually. I think we've got there.